Everyone, I think the music means it's time to start this meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to our June 1 city council study session prior to our formal council meeting at the conclusion of this meeting. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So council, if you could please refer to that agenda. I know we talked about it last Thursday. There's currently, there's nothing off the consent agenda, but there are some interesting things on the agenda. Council, any, yes, council member Duff.
Yes, I wanted to pull off consent number 7A. I believe Jeff McVeigh and Nana will be have some information for us during the study session to review that. And that is the modifying the form-based code.
Right.
Then I just had a question on 7D, not to pull it off consent, but one that I wish I had asked last week was is the 30% discount rate off the water service for seniors? And I just wanted to ask how seniors apply that.
Okay, Jen, maybe before we get to 7D, on 7A, I know that I agree, I think Jeff, I've heard Jeff McVeigh is planning on, or planning on hearing a presentation from Jeff to explain 7A. Do you want to hear that presentation in study session and then allow the item to remain on consent? Or would you like to have it taken off of consent so that we vote on it in the formal council meeting?
I think we should take it off consent at this point.
Okay. And then if that's the case, I wonder if we ought to have Mr. McVeigh's presentation during the formal council meeting, you know, if we're going to be considering it in that situation. Do you have a preference whether we hear it now or in the formal council meeting?
No, I leave that to you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, I'd suggest that we have it in the study session, and that way, if if council member Duff's questions get answered like mine were, then we can just leave it on consent after that.
Okay, well, so let's go to the, could staff please address council member Duff's question regarding 7D, the lower utility fees for low-income seniors, what it, what it takes to trigger that 30% to how someone qualifies for that 30% reduction?
Mayor, council member Duff, should this be approved, Mesa Can, our partner nonprofit agency, will be the agency that will be reviewing the qualifications and determining eligibility. And then they will be informing us if they do qualify that we would apply that 30% discount. The, if approved, wouldn't go into effect until July 1. So we, should this be approved, we'll be working on some education and information so that our low-income seniors know of the eligibility requirements and they have the phone number to contact Mesa Can.
I assume once they become eligible, that their recurring bill stays at that amount thereafter. They don't have to re-qualify annually, or do we know at that point?
Yeah, oh, it does, it does. And every five years, they would need to reapply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, maybe before we move on, then why don't we invite Mr. McVeigh forward? Carrie, it's my understanding that he's ready to address agenda item 7A. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, Jeff and Nana are here to make that presentation this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation, and with me tonight is Nana Apaya, our planning director. Nana and I worked together on developing this text amendment with, with planning staff. And I wanted to give you, we want to give you a quick overview of what that text amendment would include, describe how we got to where we are, and then be ready to answer any questions that you would have. The purpose of our text amendment is to address very large parcels, development parcels within our downtown that would be occupied by a lot of, would be forced in, under the current code requirements, to be occupied by a lot of active commercial uses. And when we say active commercial uses, that means essentially retail and restaurant. Things like a, an accountant's office would not be considered active retail. What this text amendment would do would allow buildings of very large square footages with very large frontages on, on a front street to reduce the amount of active retail uses they are required to have by 50%. It, it provides additional flexibility on additional uses, then, that would be available to them beyond just retail and restaurant to include things like offices, things like health clubs. Right now, a health club would not be allowed on Main Street in downtown. This would allow a health club to happen there. It also does allow residential as a transitional use. So to describe where this would be applicable, this would only be applicable in the T5 Main Street transect. And again, it may not be easy to see, but the T5 Main Street transect is the medium blue on this map. So you have the very dark blue, which is our T6, the most dense, that does not apply. The T5 is the next one over, and then the lighter blue is the T5 Main Street Flex, which already allows this type of flexibility. This would only be available to property development projects of five acres in size or larger, and it would only be available to buildings of 100,000 square feet or larger in size that have at least 200 feet of linear frontage on a street. If they meet all of those criteria, they are eligible to be, to have a limitation of 50%, I'm sorry, a 50% reduction in their required active commercial uses to allow additional uses in, beyond those active uses. As part of that additional requirement, though, that space still would have to be constructed to a commercial standard. So in the form-based code, that commercial standard means that they have to have at least a 14-foot floor-to-ceiling clear height. And then we added, in addition to that, that they also have to construct to a commercial building code standard, which is, in this case, an assembly occupancy, which would require fire sprinklers and the type of life safety, you know, ingress egress requirements that you would normally get for a restaurant. So we have tried to make this very clear, that we intend this to be a transitional-type use, and that the property would transition to commercial use, active commercial uses, when the market would allow it. The reason that, you know, going into some of the reasoning behind this is that a very large development site, five acres or larger, would have a significant amount of frontage on Main Street. That significant amount of frontage could require a, so much commercial development that it would not be able to be financed by, by the developer. Simply because if they are able to fill that space with commercial users, then they are going to have to treat that as a loss on their, on their pro forma. And if they can't get their pro forma to, to pencil, then they will not be able to move forward the project. Where you see this happen often is in Tempe in Phoenix, where you maybe drive down Apache Boulevard, you see brand-new apartments with a bunch of first-floor retail space that's vacant. The reason that you can see that happen there is that currently, Tempe draws in rent amounts significantly higher than the City of Mesa does. And those rental amounts provide the developer with enough cushion in their pro forma that they can take essentially what they would call a loss leader. So they automatically just write off that retail space on the first floor as a loss because they can make up for it in the residential. Currently, our residential rents are not high enough to provide them the cushion that they could treat that as a loss leader. Five or 10 years from now, I think we would be having a completely different conversation, but that is the case today. The goal, though, is to provide that flexibility within criteria that would encourage the developers to move forward with a, a retail component as soon as they are able to. The, the economics of retail rents versus residential rents means that there is a breakpoint in which the retail rents will far outweigh what a residential rent would be. And for the cost of tenant improvements on that first floor, it makes economic and market sense for the developer to convert that space to retail use. Now, that is my quicken, quicken overview. I'm sure there is a lot of discussion and questions that might be out there, and Nana and I are happy to field those questions now.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, Jen, I went through this exact same conversation with Nana and Jeff on Friday, I believe, because I wasn't comfortable putting years of work behind us by, by moving in this direction on form-based code. And I, I think I'm comfortable now, after talking with Jeff and Nana about this, of moving it forward, and simply because we are going to put in place a development agreement that calls out for, really to try to get the bottom floor built last in a phased-out manner. And that will give us time for ASU to be developed downtown and for the project on Mesa and Main Street to be developed and some other things that take place that will bring the residential component to the downtown and the activity to downtown that I think it'll help build out or prove, prove out the, the retail in that location. And so after, after meeting with Jeff and after meeting with Nana, I feel more comfortable. I mean, I still don't like the idea of amending our form-based code. Again, I think, I think it's a potential for opening Pandora's box in the future for other developers, but I think as long, as long as we can hold them to a development agreement and be able to phase it to allow the project, our other projects' time to develop, I think, will help us in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Luna.
I agree with my colleague, council member Thompson. This is something that we have been working in terms of form-based codes for several years now. We want to encourage development, we want to encourage business activity in the downtown area. Given the pandemic, given the economic situation we find ourselves in, this is probably a good compromise working with Opus and, and, and the City of Mesa. You know, my hope is that as we move, you know, encouraging people to move into the facility, leaving the downtown, the, the lower space open, that we could work with partners like Rail Mesa, we could work with LISC, we could work with Benedictine University, with Cahuhtz, encouraging some of those students, as they become entrepreneurs, to move into those spaces, to develop that whole down, that bottom-floor area, if you will. So I'm going to be in support of this. I think it's a great idea. I understand, Mr. Thompson, worked with Mr. McVeigh and, and Nana to look at the development agreement as we look at developing and encouraging more people to move up to the facility and leave the, the bottom floor empty. Hopefully, in a couple of years, we can encourage additional development and economic activity in, in that space. So I, I'm going to be in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Haredia, and then Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I think just two questions for maybe Jen and Nana. First question, is a developer thinking of kind of a phased approach as far as building all the buildings since it's a large area? Just I, maybe I missed there, but is there a phase of the timeline, I guess, of years? And then my second question is just understanding kind of how, you know, you mentioned the specs around then building to commercial at the bottom floors. And so how, how, I guess, I, I'm kind of just thinking, like, how do they build a, a residential at the bottom transitional with specs of commercial? Is that done often? Or what's the success there as far as them leaving the residential to commercial? Because I think, you know, holding them accountable will be, will be important, but, you know, as, once they set that, my fear is that they will keep it residential. So is there, is there specific items in the development agreement that you, there's timelines or, or market analysis, or as we build more to downtown, that they, they need to move into a more commercial retail flexibility?
Sure, thank you. Mayor, Council, I, I think it'll benefit for me to take one step back and give a little context. This is a, this is a, this is direct response to a development proposal for the Brown and Brown site that is approximately 10-acre site that is looking to develop a, a mixed-use development, primarily residential, but including commercial retail and live-work offices as part of the overall development. Having said that, this is an issue that has been in our form-based code from 2012, when we adopted it, and that we've been experiencing it with other developments all along, this, this requirement for first-floor active retail uses. It's been, has been an issue that we've known that we need to address at some point. We just have not had the development proposal come forward that, that has forced this issue. This happens to be the development proposal that's, that's forced the issue. So this would be the first project that could benefit from this, from this code amendment. The project that we are talking about is an Opus development. It is intended to be a phased project, so the first phase would be around, I think, 350,000 square feet of buildings with around 340 residential units. But there is surface parking lots on either edge that have been sized and designed in such a way, with utility infrastructure sized and designed such a way, that a large portion of those two surface parking lots would become future phases for a mid-rise towers that would front on Serine and on Hibbert. The phasing that, that council member Thompson was, was discussing, I have had that conversation with the, the developer as recently as today. Their commitment to us would be that they would not do the tenant improvements for the first-floor space that we, they would be considering transitional until the last phase of that first part of their development. So the first phase of the development include that 350,000 square feet, they would build out the residential as the last step of that. They have also committed that they will market to retail those spaces from the day they start construction. And if they are, if they get to the end of the construction and they have retail user, they will build it out as retail. Relating to the building code and building out to a commercial assembly occupancy and using that for residential use, the, the actuality is that they're going to spend a lot more building out that space to allow commercial use than you would normally build out for residential use. So the fact that they have to install, you know, commercial sprinklers and have fire rating and have ingress and egress would all be higher costs than they would normally have if they were building out straight residential development. So from that perspective, they're going to be putting an initial investment into the building that, that helps warrant the fact that they want to recoup that investment through commercial leases. I did do an analysis along the way, comparing our residential rents, what we get today, and our commercial rents and what we get today compared to how long, at where the breakpoint is. And, and right now, we are getting commercial rents that range anywhere from $8 up to $15 a square foot. Downtown Gilbert, if we want to use that as a comparison, they get commercial rents around $40 a square foot. Somewhere around $25 to $30 a square foot. The math becomes much more in favor of, of retail uses because they, the developer could gain upwards of, you know, 100 to $250,000 a year in additional revenues if that was getting commercial rents versus residential rents.
Thank you. Council, other, other questions of Mr. McVeigh? Yes, council member Duff.
Well, I, I'm going to take a few minutes. So Mark or Jeremy, if you have something more, you know, I'll let you go so they don't feel like you're waiting forever.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Mr. Freeman does have something.
Thank you, council member Duff. Jeff and Nana, how many parcels do you think are in the downtown area that are five acre or more? Would this, would this apply to?
Mayor, council member Freeman, there are very few parcels by themselves that are five acres from a development site perspective. Right now, this is the only development site that's within our T5 Main Street that is a five acres or larger. There are three other sites in our downtown that currently aren't zoned form-based code, but that would be eligible to be considered form-based code, and those happen at Site 17, the area around the Convention Center, and the area around the city's South Center Campus, all of which are, are lands completely owned and controlled by the city.
Well, you know, for the record, I, I like this change in our form-based code. Again, I want a level playing field for all the developers so that they walk into our community, our permitting process, they know what they're doing or getting. And, you know, the whole reason for form-based is to make it a little bit, quite a bit simpler for a developer to not have so much processes to go through. And I think as we mature with this form-based code, there might be other tweaks in the future, as we've done in the past, we've tweaked it a little bit. So I am in support of this, and I appreciate you and Nana visiting with me today on this Council member Duff, it's all yours.
Are you good, Mayor?
Yes, no other comments, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. First of all, this is a very important part of Main Street. It's what, 10 acres? There's no other lot along Main Street that we will develop that is going to have such significance. All the other things that we have are, would be more of an infill development. So this is like the last one. So I'm very, you know, I've been back and forth on this topic, and a lot of the community has their concerns. I've listened to them, and making sure this is a great development, not just one that can be on Main Street, and it needs to be a great development. It is the connection between central downtown and, and going east. So we need to make sure that it's activated and it's well-done, and a point of pride for our community. I have some questions regarding that. And so we have 350,000 square feet at this current build-out that we want to do, at 340 units. What are we looking at, like total square footage? How much square feet? I think you gave this to me, Jeff, when I was asking earlier today. Total square foot, a commercial, will we end up with, with it totally built out?
Yes, Mayor, council member Duff, under the, under today's code, that would require a commercial build-out of 48,000 square feet. If the code amendment is approved, that would allow a commercial build-out of 24,000 square feet.
And that is upon total build-out, not in this phase that they're beginning with, where we're looking at right now?
That would be as of this phase.
As of this phase. And do you have a, what would that figure be at total build-out?
We, we do not, at this point, have square footages for the two future mid-rise buildings because those would have to be based off of the market demand at that point. The developer has not committed to the residential mix type, whether it's a bunch of one-bedrooms or a mix of one-twos and threes. All of those would play into the, the size of the building, so we don't have, at this point, we have, we have a footprint and we have estimations, but we can't say what the square footage would be until they get to the design.
Okay, so we don't have an idea, a number of units or total square foot on the total build-out until the time that it is built out? Is that correct?
Correct.
So right now, we're looking at the immediate decision of allowing it to slip from 48,000 square feet of commercial to 24,000.
And, and if I may, just, just correct that slightly, it's not that we are eliminating 24,000 square feet of commercial, we are making 24,000 square feet eligible for additional uses, some of which would be considered commercial, just not active retail or restaurant. So what, a health club was not, was not allowed before, a health club would be allowed today, or if the code amendment was approved.
Okay. You said there's a development agreement in place?
There is not, there is not a development agreement in place today. The developer has indicated his desire to apply for a GIPlet. A GIPlet would require a development agreement. As staff, we have expressed our interest, our, our openness to the discussion of GIPlet, so by default, we would necessarily have to have a development agreement.
Okay, so at this point, even with the adjustment, we don't have a development agreement as far as that they would market and report the retail that they're going after, or that we know there's efforts?
Mayor, council member Duff, that is absolutely correct, but I will also say that without a development agreement, they don't, they can't move forward, no matter what is approved today or through the zoning clearance process.
Okay, so a development agreement is outstanding as far as any terms and conditions to meet our concerns?
Correct.
I understand the challenges we have today, especially with COVID, but this is a project that probably wouldn't break ground until next year and would be available for rent and lease until 2022. That, at that time, will probably have 1,500, 2,000 residential units in place, we'll have ASU in place, we'll have some other commercial in place. I feel downtown will be much more active in the next couple of years, and will progress. And I don't want to give up on that. I want to press that it is a good decision for us economically in our downtown and what the trans-oriented development is based upon. And given the form-based code, it took a long time to work through that and define that for our community. There's a lot of community interaction, and we're making this adjustment with little community interaction, and that is a concern of many of our downtowners that really want to be part of the process and development. They've stuck in there, they've supported downtown, they advocate for downtown. And so this is, I feel, a little, almost disjointed, disconnected, where we really need to bring everybody along. I'm concerned, on the other aspect, you can tell I'm torn on this, is, you know, our, our Main Street is not built out right now, but again, I have high aspirations that it will be. I, I don't, I don't know. We don't have any other live-work projects in downtown, do we? I mean, the grid, but it's not the same situation.
Not in a traditional sense of what live-work would be, no.
So in that respect, I feel it's filling that void. However, we've got to get the work part in there because we have the live part satisfied in a number of different developments already. So I'm on the fence, and we'll just leave it off consent for right now, while I'll, I'll let it kind of stew for a minute.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Mr. Haredia.
Yeah, no, I, you know, my, my concern is around the residential on the first floor, like, that's what I, Thompson, I think you alluded to, and some of the comments here. And how do, is there a way to kind of create the, maybe like a step process? You, you mentioned that it's only, it, it, right now, it's so restricted that they can't add, you know, offices or other, other types of businesses, but is there, is there a way to just include additional types of businesses that can be utilized on the first floor, not so much residential? Because I, I just feel like residential, it's going to be such of a, like, a, an easy thing to fall into, to set it up as, you know, initially residential and then, then moving it to commercial. Is there, is there conversations that have been had on, you know, adding just the other pieces that they can do, not just, you know, retail or commercial, but the other pieces, Jeff, that you mentioned, you know, offices, gyms, and others, and not so much residential?
Mayor, council member Haredia, we have, as part of this code amendment, we have added all of those additional uses as optional as well. And all of those additional uses would also generate rents likely much higher than a, than a residential user would. The developer's commitment to us that they're going to market to retail and commercial users throughout construction tells me that their preference would be to fill those spaces with retail or commercial uses as well, simply because it's better for simply because it's better for their bottom line. Assuming that, and I'm looking back, I'm sorry, to my analysis. Assuming that, that five years from now, downtown Mesa is generating retail rents of forty dollars a square foot. That would amount to around eight hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. Also assuming that that same space could be used for residential use at a, at a cost of two dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot, which is about what Tempe is getting today and which is almost currently, we're looking at a dollar sixty-five to a dollar seventy-five in downtown. So looking at two optimistic futures, five years out, uh, two dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot, that same space would generate five hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. So it's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year increase in revenues for the cost of a tenant improvement build out. So I, I believe from a pure economics perspective that that is a cost benefit that the developer would be willing to make. I do believe, though, that if we wrote into a development agreement a requirement that after, say, five years, you shall convert this residential space to commercial space, whether that is their intent or not. Any investor or financier is going to look at that statement and say, well, we have to build our, our pro forma based off of that, that contingency. And so that would still, I think, cause an issue with the, the financing of the project. The developer, if, if the case is going to be discussed, I think the developer is intending to be available to, to discuss this and they would be able to confirm my, my assessment.
Thank you, Council. Other questions? Yes, Jeremy?
Comment. Um, Jeff, when you talk about the pro forma, what, what about the vacancy rate on the residential versus the commercial? Is that factored into that pro forma or do we have a copy of this pro forma anywhere that, that we can review?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, forgive me if I didn't make it clear. Those are numbers that I've generated myself. Um, I'm sure the, the developer has a pro forma and would be willing to share it with us if requested, but we do not have their pro forma. Every pro forma does anticipate a certain amount of vacancy rate. Residential vacancy rates in, in downtown right now are very low, in the, in the one to two, one to five percent rate. So, um, commercial vacancies, though, in downtown are significantly higher.
Yeah, and I guess that, that was my question. You know, when you talk about the, the business economics of which one is more profitable, I mean, I, I think that you have to take into account the vacancy rates as well. I mean, you can drive down Main Street and see a ton of vacancies on the commercial side, but I, you know, I don't know that we see, to your point, I, I don't see a ton on the residential side. In fact, it seems like there's an affordability problem on the residential side. And so I was just curious if we looked at that. The other thing, I, you know, I assume on these pro formas, you know, when we talk about developers going out and looking for investors in the businesses, it's not as if we have access to these pro formas and we're seeing the net profit of these deals, right? It's like, that's not factored, like, hey, the net profit of that deal is too high. You could afford a lower net profit. I'm assuming we don't go to that extent with any of these developers?
Not at this stage in a project. Through development agreements, we often require them to provide evidence of their financial ability and that we get the financial documents to be able to verify that they are consistent with what they've been saying to us. So that would
Interesting.
As part of our development negotiations, we would likely require a market study to, to, to help prove up this, this, this condition.
Gotcha. Okay, I wasn't aware of that. That's interesting. And so, um, I do have a couple other questions related to this. The, last week when we spoke about this issue, I, I think the, the main thing that I had heard, I think it was Thompson or maybe there's a couple of councilmembers that spoke to this point, but, you know, is there a benefit to using, amending our entire code versus just using a special use permit for this specific project?
Mayor, members of the council, answer that question. So the, it goes back to the whole idea of a form-based code. The intent of a form-based code is basically to provide that level of predictability and assurance that if you come into the community and you follow the prescription, you are basically going to be able to get your project approved. With a special use permit or council use permit, there's so many ambiguity in a certain way or unpredictability. And that does not give that assurance to, you know, the development community. And so that goes back to the fundamental reason why we have the form-based code. So that's why we recommend the text changes that even though right now there are three parcels that may qualify for this, you know, text amendment or be able to build. In the future, even if there is redevelopment, there is that assurance that if you have, if you meet the specific standards, you will be able to basically get your project approved. So that's why we are recommending a text change instead of going through either conditional use permit or a specific use permit.
Okay, I understand. And I, I guess then, if I understood previously, we talked about that this code amendment would only apply to maybe four properties anyways, and all the rest of them are all owned by the city. So, and forgive me, I'm not a, I'm not a planning guy, so, you know, I don't know the logistics here. But would it make more sense to amend the code to allow this across the entire downtown district then, if that was the case, if we were looking for eliminating these ambiguities so that everything was consistent? Or why just this specific zone, if you will?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker. It pains me to say this, but what, what we're experiencing is, is the limitations of our code that was adopted in 2012 without us knowing until we had a project of this scale come to us. Our, our form-based code was really designed and built around the idea that everything in our downtown was gonna build out as it does on Main Street from center to ropes and with individual buildings, narrow frontages, and that that would be the entire code. The reality is, is that once you get outside of that historic downtown core, we have much larger development sites, much larger developable areas, and the code does not fit those cases appropriately. So the, the reason we don't want to apply blanket across downtown is that we don't want to break up the fabric where we do already have really walkable retail spaces that are already built and designed for retail spaces in the core and make those eligible to be, to be converted over to residential uses. Rather, we'd like to do it on much larger sites where through the site planning architectural design review effort, we can control, you know, the streetscape, the landscaping, and we can start addressing those issues that also play into walkability and activation of the street beyond the use that's adjacent to the street.
Okay. Um, and the last question I had was, and I think Frankie asked this question, but I didn't really understand the response, is that you had indicated previously that the, the area would necessarily be used for retail or something else, but that it could be used for gyms or, or other things. Would it prohibit the use of that other fifty percent being all retail? I, I think the answer is no. They could in fact build the other fifty percent retail, right? It doesn't sort of force them to use any of that, those, that in-between space between retail and residential?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, you're correct. They will be essentially required to, at least fifty percent of the ground floor will be at least retail restaurant as a requirement. How they lay that out is probably going to be part of our design and, and design review efforts to make sure that it's in a good alignment along the street to encourage that we have that walkability. But they will not be, they will be required for fifty percent to be retail and then fifty percent that gives them flexibility. It could be retail, it could be office, it could be a gym, it could also be residential.
Okay, and if the, if the goal is maybe to allow them a little more flexibility, whether it's a gym or something else, could, could the code be rewritten that maybe we don't give them the full ability to go one hundred fifty percent retail, but another use other than retail so that we're just not creating a much of retail space on that ground floor?
Councilmember Whitaker, make sure, I'm gonna make sure I'm understanding the question. Is the question, would, would it make sense for us to add additional uses available for that other fifty percent that is subject to just the active retail requirement?
Right, I guess I'm, if, if you're saying half of this has to be retail, but that doesn't include some other uses like a dental office or a gym or something else. For the remaining fifty percent, could you say, well, you have more flexibility to build other things in this area? It just can't be residential, to give them that extra layer of flexibility?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think that we would be happy to look into that and, and, and bring back a proposal to you for additional text amendment. I think Nana and I, as we were reviewing this, there was a couple uses that we questioned why those wouldn't be allowed on a Main Street. And so I think that the, that we, that we could, we could put something together along that line.
Okay, yeah, I guess from my perspective, my only concern is, you know, we know we have a residential market. My, my concern is that we bring too much residential without offsetting that bottom floor of other uses. But I, I would be open to the idea of, you know, that, that in-between business, maybe it doesn't qualify as retail, but then maybe it's not, it's not residential either. I, I don't have any other questions, John.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, I, I agree with, with what has been said. That this is a, to Jen's point, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our downtown to, it's, it's unusual or unheard of, you know, to have a ten-acre square block of your city up for redevelopment. And so I agree that we need to be very thoughtful in the way that we proceed. I, I'm a big fan of the, of the, the code and the flexibility that it allows. But I, I think Jeff's point earlier that when it was adopted in 2012, you know, Brown and Brown was selling a lot of cars back then, and I think we weren't quite thinking that we were going to be dealing with a project of this scope with this size in our downtown. And to mandate a hundred percent retail on a project with that much square footage is really, I think, well, at least right now, in terms of the market right now, it's impossible. Uh, I, I spoke with the Opus folks and I got the sense from them that they, they were disappointed that they were asking for this, that they would love nothing more than to have an entire ground floor of retail. As Jeff indicated, the, the lease rates that they would get would be a lot better, you know. But the reality is that they can't lease out their, their buildings that, that much square footage in downtown Phoenix or Tempe. And if we can get fifty percent of, you know, this is just so big. If we can have fifty percent of that square footage dedicated to retail and restaurants and then above and beyond that, other types of commercial, I think that's not bad. And there are worse things than having people, you know, living in, in downtown. So I think that without this tweak to the code, frankly, we're just not, this project's not gonna happen. And it might be a cycle or two before something does happen at that space. And even when it ultimately does happen, I don't think it's gonna be exclusively retail. Right now, we've got a lot of vacant retail in our downtown. I think we want to focus reactivating a lot of the retail that's dark now. And if we throw this amount of brand-new shiny retail on the market a block away, I think it's just gonna continue to make it very difficult for us to, to get tenants in the existing retail that we have downtown. So I, I'll just close by saying I, my, I'm gonna be supporting the project tonight. The, the Opus projects that I've seen done in other parts of the area are very high quality. They're the types of projects I would be proud to have in our downtown. They're really gonna elevate our, our downtown. Very well done, very polished. So I'm excited for that to happen. All right, so this is not up for vote, obviously. That, that, we're gonna have this on our agenda in the meeting that follows this one. I do know that we have also some blue cards that have been filed recently, also asking that item seven A B off of the consent agenda. So we'll go ahead. Yes, Jen? Jen, you're, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I just had one more question. I don't have my map in front of me, but will this apply to Site seventeen?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, currently Site seventeen is not zoned within the form-based code. It's, it's identified as a special planning area. And as part of our, um, working with the developer that, that we selected through the RFP process, we will apply transect zoning as part of their development process.
And also, for commercial, isn't office included in that? Or when we say commercial, that's only retail?
Commercial includes office, but our form-based code is very specific in use types. So commercial is an inactive, is not an active use, whereas retail and restaurants are active use. So there is a clear distinction when you're on a Main Street-fronting space, whether or not the code allows active commercial use or just commercial use.
On this particular project, there's, middle of the project, the north-south kind of divides the lot along Main Street. So that is the area we're speaking of specifically as far as allowing it to be fifty percent to be in flux.
Just, just the buildings fronting on Main Street, yes?
On that division that it runs north-south?
The, the buildings, the buildings that are running north-south, because they do not front onto Main Street, do not have the same requirement for active retail uses. They're, they have, they will be allowed as retail use, they could be allowed as commercial use, but by code, they are also allowed as residential uses.
Okay, so we're just talking about the buildings that are facing Main Street themselves?
Correct.
And they can be residential or office or activated retail or?
Up, yes, up to fifty percent of that, those spaces.
And are we speaking about any other, I'm trying to, I should have the map in front of me. Any other areas? There is some other frontage, but I believe it's all residential, but on like Serine and Hibbert.
Currently, the, the form-based code only requires active retail uses on front streets, and in this case, that is Main Street. The new buildings that, that would be coming as future phases along Hibbert and Serine are in different transect zones that would not require, they would allow, but would not require first-floor active retail uses. And that's the code as it exists today.
And what would happen if we delayed this decision for a week?
I guess it'd be a two-week delay to the next council meeting. I don't know. I have not had that discussion with the developer to see what the, the impact of a continuance would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions on this item?
I got one last question, John. This is Jen's district. I'm just curious what your thoughts are, Jen, as we move into the actual council meeting, if you're not gonna speak again at the council meeting.
Well, I think we should have the community, we have some blue cards that will be, you know, presented. And that's why I want it on consent, so that we consider all options. I had been back and forth on this. I understand where the community is. I understand where we are in planning and zoning and, and all that. So at this, I've been leaning towards approval. But I need to consider allowing others in our community to have their voice too. They're important, you know, to our downtown development, that they're engaged.
Mayor, if I may, just one, one point. I want to make
Yes, Joe.
I want to make sure Council understands that the approval, denial or approval of the text amendment is not approval of the project, that that project is still in review with planning, zoning staff as part of the zoning clearance. So site plan and architectural review is still going, ongoing at this point.
That, that's a great point, because, I mean, we're talking about amending the ordinance right now for the zoning. I mean, for the, for the planning, but this is not approving a zoning case. This is not tied specifically to that piece of property. So if we made this tweak, we'll have several more, or at least a few more bites at the apple when this project comes back to us as a zoning case. Is that true or not?
We're gonna have at least one more bite at this apple through the zoning clearance because we have gone through two levels of review. So they'll be resubmitting their third package back to us based off of the results of, of this text amendment. And then should they, we go forward with a development agreement, we will also have that period of time for review again.
Okay, that, that's, that's good to put it in, in context. All right, I'm gonna move us along just because we're, we're still on the first agenda item of our study session and we're past the time to start our council meeting upstairs. So another agenda item that is on the agenda for upstairs is item six A. We talked about this last Thursday. This has to do that with amending our ordinance for appointing a city This has to do with amending our ordinance for appointing city magistrates. On our agenda, we have, Item 2 is to discuss and provide direction on the process for selection of the next presiding city magistrate. And it, but that is tied to the item we're voting on to amend the ordinance for selecting the city magistrate. Right now, there is not, you know, the, well, you know what? I'm going to stop talking to Mr. Smith, take it from here just to let us know a little more about the Agenda Item 6A. But also, Mr. Smith, why don't you speak to the question of us proceeding forward with selecting a new presiding magistrate?
Yes, Mayor and counsel. And this item is also, as you pointed out, is Item 2A on council for the study session tonight. And as we discussed last Thursday, Presiding Judge Tafoya is retiring after almost 17 years as the Presiding Judge of the City of Mesa after an amazing career, an outstanding career for the City of Mesa. And our current code actually doesn't have a process for selecting the Presiding Magistrate. And so this code amendment provides a process and provides counsel with two options. And the decision tonight for counsel on the study session is to give direction to staff as to one of those, one of those options. Those two options are, is to go through the Judicial Advisory Board process, the traditional process that you do for city magistrates, or to do an internal recruitment of the sitting magistrates, who obviously have already gone through the Judicial Advisory Board process in getting selected by counsel and appointed to the bench by counsel. And so really, we're looking for direction to staff today, tonight, regarding whether or not counsel wants to go through the Judicial Advisory Board process or through an internal recruitment process.
Okay, thank you. So just so we, I may have moved us a little further ahead on this agenda than I should have. But before we, we have active discussion on that Agenda Item, counsel, is there any other questions that you have related to the agenda for the meeting that follows this one? Okay, seeing, we went, we'll then officially call Agenda Item 2 that Mr. Smith just kind of teed up for us. And then it's the question of resolving how we're going to select our next city magistrate, a presiding city magistrate. As you know, the hiring of magistrates is one of the few things that our counsel does, along with city clerk and the city attorney. Who else am I forgetting? The, well, the city auditor, the city magistrates are our hires. So we need to decide how we're going to do this. I have spoken, like maybe many of you have, with Judge Tafoya. He has recommended that his replacement come from those currently on the bench at the Mesa City Court. I think that we have a great process in the City of Mesa for selecting our judges. The Judicial Advisory Board does a wonderful job. I have been told by people who, that I, whose opinions I trust that Mesa really has an outstanding group of judges in our municipal court. And tonight, we're reappointing one of those judges, Alicia Lawler, who I've known for many years and is just an exemplary judge. So we've got a very strong bench, you know, from which to choose. And I think, so I, I'm a fan of the idea of us going with an internal recruitment. Again, we have great judges, they're familiar with our court and our personnel, they're familiar with what makes Mesa special, our specialty courts, the Veterans Court, the Community Court. They've all previously been vetted by the Judicial Advisory Board. Once we appoint a presiding magistrate, that person, you know, when they are reappointed, will again go through the process of being vetted by the Judicial Advisory Board for recommendations. So I'm inclined to follow the advice of Judge Tafoya. I think it's the correct decision, and focus on a internal recruitment from our sitting judges for the Presiding Magistrate position. So I throw it open for counsel comment. Let's go with Mr. Luna and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last, past seven years that I've been on city council, we have used the Judiciary, Judicial Advisory Board to provide recommendations on who should be sitting on the city bench. They've done a stellar job. The members on this board represent a variety of professional individuals within the City of Mesa. And they've done a really good job in terms of making the selection. They forward those selections to us, and at the end of the day, we are the ones that finally decide who should serve on the bench. And so I've been real pleased with that effort. So I'm going to support that effort, that we continue to look at the internal process and work with the Judicial Advisory Board as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I agree to an extent, Mayor. My only concern is, is that we always, every time we go outside, we always seem to find that one person that really, you know, kind of wows us and kind of blows our socks off, right? And so, you know, I, I wouldn't be afraid to look outside. I mean, I traditionally have always preferred to promote from within. But you don't know what you don't know. And I think if there's an opportunity to, to perhaps look at and compare some outside persons to, to what we currently have, I think, I think that's a good thing for our community and I think it's a good thing for our, for our city and for the judges themselves. Because I think there's a lot of their peers out there that, that are just as good, if not better. And we should be, we should have the ability to, to look at them and consider them as well. Like I said, every time we, every time we seem to go through the process, we get some absolutely outstanding candidates, and which is why we have such great courts right now in Mesa.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, counsel? You know, there's certainly nothing wrong with going outside. I mean, I'm, I'm, I won't be upset if that's the, that's the direction our counsel wants to go. I just am so comfortable with the folks that are currently on the bench. I, I think it's going to be tough for someone coming from the outside to knock one of them out of the, out of contention. So if, maybe just for purposes of moving this along, we should have a motion, have a vote, and, and that will give us some direction as to where to go. Mr. Freeman?
I'll make a motion to do the judicial process.
So does that mean an internal candidate or to open it for external candidates?
Internal candidate, sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, if not, we will do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 3. That's to acknowledge receipt of committee minutes. If someone make a motion to that effect, please. Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilmember Whitaker? Councilmember Whitaker, I'm sorry, we didn't hear you. Councilmember Whitaker, can you hear us? I wonder if we're having a technological problem. Jeremy, are you, are you with us?
I just lost my audio for about a minute. I apologize, I didn't hear anything.
Oh, that's okay. Councilmember Whitaker, we are voting on a motion to acknowledge receipt of committee minutes. And we get word to you in the roll call vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Item 4 on our agenda is the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences. Who would like to share with us? Let's start with Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. This past week, I participated in the National League of Cities, the large city call, for all the large cities here in the United States. And a lot of our conversation was dealing with, obviously, the protests and the riots that were happening in the communities. And it was pretty saddening to hear some of the things that are happening. However, trying to manage the disruptions in the community and listening to the feelings of everybody, we had a pretty strong conversation on that. So I learned a lot from that conversation as well. But along with that, our Mesa Cares Initiative, another thing I'd like to point out is the next City Mesa Food Drive will be held at River View Park. That's in District 1, June 17th, at Sloan Park. And again, it'll be from 8:00 AM to noon over at Sloan Park. So I've had a fun time participating in that, as well as I know the other council members have as well. But you can show our Mesa that we care by donating food, so we'll continue to ask our residents to help others in need. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was also busy. Last Thursday, I attended the Tele-Ton Hall held by NLC related to the APA, APA on the Importance of Self-Care for Elected Officials Throughout the Country as we've gone through the issues related to COVID. Also, I attended the NLC's West Regional Call and received an update on the Essential Cities Cares, which is an essential campaign. It was a presentation on our federal advocacy efforts related to the pandemic, pandemic support. And this Friday, I took a picture with Frank over at Pacino's Restaurant. They supported the care, the food program through the, through, and provided meals for the Legacy Retirement Home as part of the Mesa Care Restaurant Buyout Program. So thank you to Pacino's and thank you for, the City of Mesa providing that opportunity. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Counsel, other comments about this past week? Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, maybe you can talk a little bit about our hydration donation kickoff this morning?
Yes, thank you very much. I think everyone, this is an event that I think we're all very familiar with. As we know, we live in a, a place that can be life-threatening for those who don't have shelter and don't have access to water and, and a place to cool down. Every year, in the valley, we, there are people that die of the combination of the high heat and the lack of water. So a 14-year tradition in the City of Mesa is our hydration donation campaign. We kicked that off today. I think our goal is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thompson, I think 400,000 bottles of water. Last year, we exceeded that goal. This year is going to be more challenging because of COVID and, you know, the other, just the situation we find ourselves in. So this is a year that we need to, that is probably more important than many other years. As you know, we have an increase in homelessness, an increase of folks who need shelter and need access to water in order to be safe. So I would encourage our entire council to really take on this cause and do what we can to get the word out to our community to contribute. The next time you're in the grocery store, grab another case of water, drop it off at a fire station or one of the other locations that is collecting water bottles. It really is a matter of life and death and, and something that we need to rally around. So thank you for joining me and, and earlier today, Mr. Thompson, to kick that off. Mr. Heredia?
Yeah, just real quick, just brief, Wednesday, our next canned food drive is at Dobson Ranch Golf Course. So anybody that can go from 8:00 to 12, or 8:00 to 12 at Dobson Ranch Golf Course, I know they, they're, they're giving away some giveaways and, and, you know, free golf and those kinds of things. So please support the next canned food drive here in West Mesa. Also, with the Restaurant Buyout Program for Mesa Cares, I was, I stopped by Friday at a Mesa's Pizza located at Dobson in Guadalupe, great pizza there. But they, they had, they participated in feeding some of the hospital staff this past week, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Frankie. Counsel, any other thing you'd like to share with us from this past week? Jen, is this the, is this the, you're not going to do it?
I know, I just, I, I don't know. I'm all thinking about Form-based codes so much that I looked at my calendar, I didn't see anything shouting out at me. So I'll make up for lost time next week.
All right, we'll look forward to that. All right, thank you, councils. You know, we do have another meeting ahead of us. But before then, Ms. Kent, are you, can you help us with our schedule for future meetings or if Mr. Brady is present?
Sure.
Either one?
Mayor and counsel, I'll mention, for Councilmember Duff, she does have a Feedy Mesa Food Distribution Event at our Mesa Convention Center. So if those in the community who are in need of food assistance and food boxes, we are at the Mesa Convention Center on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 6:00 and Friday from 7:00 to 11:00. And then on the east side, Thursday and Friday, we are at the House of Refuge from 7:00 to 10:00 AM. We do have a study session this Thursday at 7:30. We do have a number of items, and that is it for today.
Thank you, Carrie. Counsel, if you would please, though that completes the agenda items for this meeting, if you'd please unmute your microphones. We'll do a voice vote to conclude this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. We will now take a short break for the playing of the introductory video for our regular council meeting.